You know, summer, it's hot. She's hanging in the. Oh, you told me that. You told me that story. So we're expecting our attorney?
Cape or something?
Now, we just couldn't find out if this is true. Where are they coming in? Number eight doesn't get their box. Pull the plug. I just have to make them plug.
Right, yeah.
You want to say everybody as well with a double somewhere? First time I don't check if I'm looking at my desk. Daniel, what are you doing here? Terrible stuff. I look at the strange ones a lot. I look at people strange sometimes.
Let's get this moving a bit. Okay, why not? I'm assuming that George is coming, so... Okay, why don't we start and then we'll see what we can cover. We may have to wait for a couple of notes for George. All right, I'd like to open the special meeting of the Village Planning Board Friday, August 7th. It's just a little before 2:30, about a minute before. And I'd like to open the meeting with a moment of silence for the passing of Maurice Whitman, if you don't mind. Thank you. Great, thank you. So, we have an agenda that includes a review for application PB 1507. It's 181 Huguenot Street. It's the project that we have been working jointly with the town board for this subdivision. Everybody should have a final plat and that and the resolution is the last item that we have on that. Two other items of business are listed. Update for the B3 zoning district project and a recreation fees policy with the board's consent. We've been asked to add a fourth item, a discussion about escrow scheduling policy. Is that okay with everybody? All right. So... The... We'll start with the first item, so...
I have to accuse myself.
Okay, so, remaining members. At the last joint meeting with the town board, they completed pretty much everything they had to do. Final approval conditional on what we do today. So, my understanding is that the... Our attorney has looked at it. He's fine with the remaining map notes. And we have here the final plat, which we got today. If you guys would like to take a look at that and just make sure you're comfortable with it. Oh, you did. Nice. There. Need some water or anything for it? Just started. This is the final plat?
Yep.
Okay, you seen this?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That is something yesterday.
Let's see those changes. Okay. Let me know if you guys have any comments or questions you can bring up.
I'm satisfied with it.
You're satisfied?
Yeah. But you're satisfied with it?
None? You're good? Okay, so, two things for consideration then. We have a resolution for approval of the final subdivision plat and... Dan, how do you want to handle the signing of the plat?
Are you ready to check?
I am for this particular item, yeah.
Right, you sign it then.
Okay.
It's been changed to say that.
Right, I got that. I wasn't sure if it was me or Rich, but Rich can, so... Okay, so, we have a resolution of approval with a number of whereas's and I'll just read the final part. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Village of New Paltz Planning Board that the application of Jewett Family Farm LLC for subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision at 181 Huguenot Street in the historic zoning district, as shown on the preliminary subdivision plat dated March 11, 2015, last revised June 10th, prepared by Brooks &amp; Brooks.
That should say last updated July 31.
Then, what I just pulled out of my pack is not...
That's an earlier version.
That. Let's not use that one.
Sorry, I didn't... If I can hear, I don't have it.
I probably have it on my computer, but... That's the one that was in my packet. I don't have it.
No, this is the earlier version. No one got it.
Well, hold on. My apologies.
Sent yesterday.
Okay, then I have it here.
Did you get it right?
It depends on us. I write this on yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah. Middle of the day.
I left the office.
Okay.
I think I have it here.
I have it. I can read it from here and then we'll make sure that the correct copy is signed. Let me begin. It is hereby resolved by the Village of New Paltz Planning Board that the application of Jewett Family Farm LLC for subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision at 181 Huguenot Street in the historic zoning district, as shown on a preliminary subdivision plat dated March 11, 2015, last revised July 31, 2015, prepared by Brooks &amp; Brooks Land Surveyors PC, is hereby approved and the Planning Board Chairman or Acting Chair is hereby authorized and directed to sign the final subdivision plat upon payment of all fees and escrow and be it further resolved that the public walking trail to be provided along the Walkehill River is set forth and the subdivision plat satisfies the reservation of recreational land provisions of Section 178-19A2 of the Village Code and that no recreation fee will be required.
So move.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then let's... When you get a copy of that printed out. And are there... Do we know if there are any fees that are outstanding at this point?
So, the administrative and administrative fee was paid for the filing fee.
Okay.
And George has provided an accounting of the escrow.
Okay.
I don't know if you have that printed out. I'm having a problem.
That's all. We don't need it right now. That's okay.
So, at least we have a status of the account from the attorney
Okay.
that he provided. So, we'll reconcile that and then have you sign the plat and issue the signed...
Yeah.
The signed resolution to the village clerk and to the applicant.
All right, so you'll be in touch with the applicant, with Heidi, about any outstanding? If there's any. I don't know what currently is in the escrow, so we can coordinate that.
So, we need to... We have George's final fee.
Okay.
We have to reconcile the final fee for the escrow.
Okay, we'll work on that out.
Ryan will present the resolution without draft on it for your signature.
Okay.
And we'll get the plat signed, too.
All right, so otherwise you guys are done, approved?
Okay, me and you about when that will happen.
Later today?
Can we have that? Well, we need to... Ryan's not working... He works on...
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday. So, we'll coordinate with Michael to have it signed on Thursday, if that's okay.
Yeah, you want to make sure that happens.
Ideally, we would have four copies of the plat signed and if we could also just be aware that we have a limited time to get it on file off at the county district, the county clerk, that you have a limited period of time. So, just try to... I would recommend acting within 60 days. Understood.
You adding four copies of the plat or adding to the plat?
I'm... I don't... I don't know what came into the office. Do we have to?
He said there was 10. I don't know the number that we need, but...
So... You giving this to me?
That's all yours. You got different files.
Oh, okay. All right, is there any reason why we can't do this sooner? Is it just your schedule that's at issue?
It's just making sure that we... I know that there's a desire to move expeditiously and we just need to make sure that we have the account reconciled and that the administrative process to close the escrow account is handled properly.
That's fine. Okay, if we can do it sooner. Thursday is the latest because then I'm unavailable for at least two weeks.
So, we're going to try to... Ryan, try to expedite that for Wednesday.
That would be great. Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I didn't think of that.
No, that's fine.
Well, I mean, I'm available until about 4:30 today, so I can do anything else before.
Okay, well, it sounds like that.
But you're going to be busy sometime.
We'll see what happens after this meeting. If we can get anything done then. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, otherwise you're all done?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Rich is back. Okay, so, the next item of business is the update about code changes proposed for the B3 zoning district. And the committee that was working on this was meeting twice weekly for the last many number of weeks and what we have for the planning board, we're hoping, is a version that we can discuss and possibly forward to the village board if you all feel that it's ready to do that and then they can begin their process. So, the last copy that we have, I guess, was the copy that you sent, George, that was a clean copy with highlights.
Yeah, that might be the easiest one to work from.
Okay.
Easiest to read. So, these were all changes that I thought we... We... The committee had come up with at the meeting last week and I may be not expressing it correctly because some of the wording wasn't agreed to. But I think the concepts are on here. So, it's really new language for the committee. We haven't seen it exactly this way before.
So, did you want to keep going?
Well, no. Why don't you walk through it?
So, what we've done with this is the committee has agreed to a number of changes that perhaps Bear explaining to the remainder of the... to the rest of the planning board. We've changed the name of the... We're proposing a name change to the district, to the Neighborhood Business Residential Mixed Use District, abbreviated NBR. The reason behind that thinking is that the focus is on mixed use. Hello there. The focus is on mixed use and so we wanted that reflected in the name rather than either Gateway, which is somewhat ambiguous or strictly business B3, which it's not intended to be exclusively that. So, we've added a purpose section, which is intended to describe sort of a vision for what the district... What the code is intending to do as the district gets developed. And in brief, it's designed to promote a neighborhood that is a combination of residential, retail service, professional, civic and cultural uses and which is defined largely by the pedestrian, by walking, bicycle and increased use of mass transit. Two of the goals of the district are to encourage residential housing on upper floors of multi-story mixed-use buildings and to foster a positive relationship between these various uses, residential, retail and service professional, while attempting to reduce the need for automobile trips and an overbuilding of parking. So, to do that, we've created a set of site development standards, which are tied to a new schedule of what allowed uses are in the district. And if you look through this, you'll see that we've broken it down into three parts that all newly constructed buildings need to be multi-story with the exception of... In two possible exceptions, when the particular site conditions do not permit safe or legally compliant construction of a multi-story building or for the construction of not-for-profit cultural facilities. Secondly, we then define how the mixture of residential and non-residential uses is to be established in multi-story buildings, requiring that along street frontage on the first story that it be limited to non-residential uses and then additional descriptions you can read. And finally, where new single-story buildings are permitted by this section, the development of such buildings shall be limited to non-residential uses as permitted in the district. We went through and looked at all of the particular bulk uses and dimensional requirements and you can see the changes we've proposed to those in trying to bring the buildings up to the street line in order to encourage a certain look to the buildings by having the first story of multi-story buildings be higher for the non-residential uses. We're allowing buildings to be a maximum of four stories, up to 50 feet in height, except as provided in Section 212-18A and exclusive of both usable rooftop space and decorative architectural features along the roof line. We've retained the impervious surface coverage at a maximum of 85% of the lot and we have played around a little bit with the yard dimensions in order to ensure that we can have sufficient building space for sidewalks and pedestrian amenities. We've reduced the rear yard setback to 10 feet in order to provide more flexibility for site development. Then we have simplified a number of other things. Lighting, we're just referring to the Village of New Paltz outdoor lighting standards. We are emphasizing, as it did previously, but I think we clarified the language on trying to ensure sufficient connections between development proposals and the rail trail to the west of this corridor. And again, we've tried to simplify the citation about bicycle parking facilities by simply referring to the chapter and article where that's discussed already in the Village Code. We have changed parking requirements to parking guidelines to be consistent with what we've already allowed the planning board to do with respect to commercial elsewhere in the village. And those are the significant changes. We also deleted the section about recreation fees since that's already included elsewhere in the code. And then the schedule provides what are the allowable uses and you'll see that everything is under special permitted use to give the planning board the opportunity to work with an applicant to sort of optimize the use of the site.
Michael, just to be clear, the legend P is permitted, S is special use. Is that correct? And PS is?
No, no. Permitted means permitted as of right with the building permit. S means special permit use.
Got it.
And so...
So, we've taken out all the Ps, all the permitted as of right.
Right, so everything is now a special permit use.
If it's allowed.
If it's allowed. And those things that aren't allowed are specifically designated with a dash as prohibited.
Correct.
I'm sorry then. Again, there's between P and PS?
Well, the P is struck out. It might be hard to get a black and white copy to see that or even a red copy.
Got it.
But the P is struck out.
Right, so a clean version would show you that...
Okay.
All the allowed uses are S.
All the allowed uses are now S and prohibited uses are explicitly noted.
Actually, I have an eye thing. So, errands, as you say, are hard to... I'm reading red.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, red and yellow are my two worst colors. Part of this is red, highlighted in yellow.
We should... We have to accommodate you. Sorry.
You're totally fact-changing, don't you?
We'll switch that up for you.
All right.
Anyway, we should...
And then just some more at the end, additional provisions.
Oh, right, thank you.
We have to define multi-story. It's never been defined. Simple definition, having more than one full floor above the M grade. An excuse... Districts are all defined somewhere in the code, but they're all defined simply by referring to the abbreviation of the districts that are in that category and there's only one mixed-use district, that's the NBR. Professional office, we define because there's no definition of professional... There's no definition of professional office and since that's permitted, we put that in. I'm recommending that... There are a couple additions. There's a list of non-residential districts. We have to include NBR as one of the non-residential... In the sense that it's allowed to business, it's allowed there. Since offices general is defined as a space in which business activities are conducted and we are defining professional office elsewhere, now I took that out, professional office. And in a couple other locations, B3 highway business is still in the code. We need to change that to NBR neighborhood business. And then, from the chart, which is Schedule B, has the bulk chart, which has all the bulk requirements. I've simply tried to conform that to what's now in the text at the latest draft, which has building height, for example, was two stories, two and a half, or 25 feet. It's being changed to four stories, 50 feet, to be consistent with this. Maximum lot coverage, I actually got it wrong, have 80%, but that's 85, I just noticed.
Right, it is.
So, that should change. Front yard dimension, we put a double asterisk and bring that down to say what is in the text. Sufficient space to allow construction of sidewalks and related pedestrian amenities. The area per use, in terms of square feet.
Pedestrian amenities also in landscaping and some is.
Right.
Do you want to add that as a reference? To allow sidewalks, landscaping and related pedestrian amenities?
You could add a... Our conversation was that that was sort of included under pedestrian amenities. He's just making a note.
I think a time to talk about things like street trees.
Yeah, and that's probably important dimension. So, area per use was 40,000 square feet, reduced to 10,000 square feet, which conforms to the minimum lot size now, which is a quarter acre. With the building line is 50 feet. Now, this uses the building line, which is what we had initially. I changed it to frontage line because that was what we're trying to get, was the front to be 50 feet. This is with the building line, so there's any consistency there in the existing code. Don't know what to do with that, whether to go...
I think that one way we can address that is White's project. There's been some work on those... The verbiage used in the narrative text for the districts and so as we bring that forward to the village board in, you know, the next month, I'll coordinate with you and make sure we have consistent language in the code and then we've got these sort of performance methods also incorporated within that sort of conification.
At this point, we don't have to really change it because what it says is that you have the 50 feet at the building line and 50 feet at the frontage. So, it just sort of duplicates the requirement. Residential prescribed what?
There is a big difference between 50% and 50% of the building line.
Yes. There is.
Okay.
I'm just saying because there's a difference, we can keep them both in there for now and then, as Dave says, we might want to correct that later on in terms of choosing which one the board really cares about, the building line or the frontage line.
Tom?
So, excuse me. We don't... It was my understanding, however, that the planning board had a preference and it was with the building line.
The committee?
Yes.
The committee.
It was just the committee.
I thought it was the frontage, but I don't know.
It was frontage.
I'm asking. I ask the committee.
I'm a big... I'm a big pro on the flag lots. That's why I promote it as I am. I think it's good. I think that's very... Not a problem if I'm building the kind together.
And that would be 25-foot frontage. So, that's the question.
Well, I just... What I would like is the planning board's basic decision. I would like that. So, it would recommend to the village board something that I can discuss with George.
Let me say that, even though that's what I believe, I wouldn't hold a decision based on that. If the rest of the board felt strong about 50 feet, 50 feet, I... I'll go along to consensus. And a strong argument for it is a bit like that.
So, yeah, go ahead.
I think in some ways it's hard to tell whether developers will want driveways or streets. However, I think part of it, I think consistent with what Mr. Rocco said was that one of the topics I talked about, for example, is that you've got Route 32 frontage and it's a... With density, it will be advantaged to almost have like a grid developer. It won't be too easy the way the lots are bigger than other features within the 32 corridor because, for example, Tributary 13 because of the rail trail. But I think that frontage is an objective with density and so I recommend that a 50-foot standard could be appropriated. I do think that that's what the group's talking about.
Frontage.
Frontage, so...
Well, and I'm talking about frontage as a concept in terms of...
Right, long-term grid concept.
So, I guess part of my concern is I don't know if all of this... So I guess part of my concern is I don't know if all of these lots meet, do they all meet that minimum?
Well, they'll be, they could developable, but this will be substandard in the sense that they can't be subdivided into-
Existing non-conformal.
Existing non-conforming lots.
So would that necessarily then require?
I thought in some ways we talked about, like, we were evaluating the quarter acre standard, which is, let's say, a quarter acre, just call it roughly 10,000 or 11,000 square feet.
Right.
And the square root on that, if we had a square or, you know, a rectangle or a lot, that it seemed like you've got some, a few lots that are less than a quarter acre, but I think we could hit that 50-foot standard in most cases, understanding there may be a few exceptions.
And then, would they necessarily have to go through variances, is that?
No, no, they can be built as is.
Okay.
We should be clear about that, I mean, that's generally the rule, not, priorly non-conforming lot can be built.
Okay.
Unless it says otherwise, and it could, which I don't.
Do you have any thoughts on this? Okay. So your preference is to reduce the frontage requirement for this, that's what you were saying?
Yes.
I mean, that's your feeling village-wide, that you think it's appropriate here?
Well, I mean, I think first of all, most of the lot development that we're talking about here is repurposed lots, we have very little infill.
Right.
Not lots that's vacant lands, we're talking about repurposing lots. You could take a lot that's 75-foot wide, and at these standards, you only put one unit on it. But if you made a 50-footed building line, there's a possibility of having two separate parcels, one behind the other.
How deep is the zone? I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
50 feet wide.
And then you got 13.
A thousand feet, yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, and the rail trail, so-
And there are very few lots that would be-
Very few lots that would be deep enough that it would pertain. I mean, on the southern end, the lots are 100, around 100 feet, maybe 150 feet deep. And they get a little wider, some of them, as you go up north, but, yeah, I don't know.
I hope we can get to 150 feet in some situations.
Yeah, maybe not.
How about on the east side of the road?
And I could, I could, I'm happy to stay.
The east side of the, well, there's a lot of different sized lots there, there's some very small ones, and it depends.
Well, to get-
Some are deeper, for sure, but-
To get to 10,200 feet.
Yeah.
So if it's a 100-foot lot, if it's 100-foot deep, you'd need a 100-foot frontage.
Right. I think more of them have, have frontage than they do depth.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a quarter acre, unless you want to go smaller than a quarter acre, it's going to be hard to squeeze in what you're looking for.
Could they go for a variance if they wanted to do that, and say we ruled it as the, as frontage, and they had to go for a variance?
Yeah, all the time.
And with the few lots that they have, that would meet that depth, also that would be a problem.
Subject to area variance, for sure.
I mean, if you have sufficient, suppose you have like 150 feet of frontage, but you don't, you only have 100-foot depth or so, you could put, in this case, you could put multiple buildings, but they would not be back-to-back, they'd be side to side, right? But it would still be fine, right?
As long as you meet the per-unit, like we have a dwelling unit-
Right.
Up to 3600 feet, so-
Meet the other requirements.
Yeah.
But if you're 50 by 100, you're at 5,000 square feet, you know, not at 10,000 square feet a lot.
Yeah, no, but I said like, you know, if you're 150 by 100, so you're over the minimum. So, because I think a lot of them have pretty, I don't think frontage is often the constraint. So, I guess, so for Tom's benefit, you would like some clarity from us. I guess I'm inclined, after listening to this, to suggest that we keep it at frontage?
Yeah.
Okay, you good at that? Okay.
Here's another quick question on it. The effect of Tributary 13 on the density, would any section of lot that's in Tributary 13, are we counting that towards the density of the lot?
Why wouldn't you?
You would, but then-
I would, but I'm a developer.
Oh, I don't think we have, are we deducting out the constrained lines?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any provision in here for that.
We don't have a, we don't have that, other than a 20-foot setback requirement.
So part of this person's lot happens to make it a legal size, but it's in the Tributary 13 area, it's still counted.
You count that, you count that increase as part of the age.
Yeah, yes.
For testing purposes.
I mean, yes.
Good.
Okay. So, can you?
So, well-
Let's look, before I-
So we're not, we're not changing the Schedule B text at this point, so the text still sits with the building line, which means that both will apply, the frontage and the building line must be 50 until that's resolved in some way, if it gets resolved. And I put in the area for dwelling, just out of the air, it's the 3630 that we use for one dwelling unit now, as sort of the per-dwelling unit size for the village. And understandably, nobody's going to be building a single-family dwelling, but if you have two or three or four together, in a multi-dwelling, multi-family dwelling, then you'd add these up and you'd get to 12,000 pretty fast.
So that is going to be, in some ways, a driver on the developability of the parcels?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's something that we didn't, so you put this in, we didn't actually discuss this in our-
I put that in because, at this point, it was prohibited to have any residential at all, so there was no number in there.
Mm-hmm.
So you could replace that prohibition with some permissible number.
All right.
You said that was a number in the existing tax, or in the existing schedule?
It's in the code elsewhere for single-family residential.
Right.
That we need that much area.
Right.
And I didn't know whether anybody wants to reduce that for the particular district.
So maybe there should be a flexibility to that standard, because as a goal, it is going to be a driver on getting mixed use and including some density. It really is going to be a driver, and it's, I think it's somewhat a new topic.
Yeah, that's, I mean, so for instance, if you wanted to build a multi-story building, 50 units, you're looking at 180,000 square feet, that's a large area. That's a lot of acres. So I don't think that's going to work, I mean, this is, for the board's information, there are a number of things that were taken out of this, one of them was the Florida area ratio, which we talked about a fair bit, which was, at that point, I, it was a maximum, and it was set at 3.0, with the idea that it would help drive some density, but we thought we could do that in other ways without necessarily constraining somebody, but, yeah, this number is going to, I think, we have to make that much smaller.
And the other thing is that all residential is going to be part of a mixed-use building.
Right.
If they're, they're, well, if I, if we go through the formula again, you can't have a residential building solely residential.
Right.
Because the first floor has to be somewhat non-residential, and then the second and third can be residential. Single-story building, if it's allowed, must be non-residential. So we won't have any single-family residences, so what you're really talking about is apartments.
Right.
And I don't know what the right number is for apartment. Give it to Dave.
Well, I think that you have a variety of standards across your districts within the existing zone.
Right.
And I haven't had the opportunity to talk with you as a planning board about how you feel about, for each additional incremental lot, you have an area basis in your different districts, and it does seem like that should be discussed and its consistency. So in a sense, I thought this district was going to set the, set an example, but I know you mimicked what was, an approach used in other districts. So it's a long-winded way of saying, I'm not prepared to make that-
No, that's okay. I, I think we need to strike this from the schedule, this area for dwelling square footage, and indicate to the village board, if we're going to send this to them, that this is a, if we need to define this in some fashion, and I'm not clear that we necessarily do, that we need to acknowledge the, again, the purpose of, that's listed here under the zoning, for the NBR district, and come up either with a mechanism like Florida area ratio, or area for dwelling that's going to, I mean, that's essentially what this almost feels like, a Florida area ratio.
And one question would be, like, do you need it for the first residential, and then it could be almost a flexible schedule from there?
Yeah.
Or not? And the attorney may have an opinion on that, but also acknowledging what you say.
Yeah.
And make the elected leaders aware that this was something that needs to be attended to.
Right.
Well, let's footnote it then.
Okay.
Take up the number, and did have a footnote, which was no dwellings permitted. I mean, is there a concept here that we're trying to get across that, that?
I'm not aware of discussion on that specifically within the BN report, which I'm using as a guiding guideline.
Yeah.
So I don't believe that there is guiding, I think that we've talked about minimum lot size as a working group, we've talked about the development form desired in this corridor, and the mix of development possibilities, but I don't think we've talked that much about the sliding scale lot size.
I was only wondering if we could capture the higher-density concept, and just have a footnote to this indicating that one of the purposes of the district is to encourage higher-density development. It's just so there's some sort of authority to, to not use one of the other numbers that is in for the R1, 2, and 3 districts.
Um, well-
If we give it blank, if we could just leave it blank, and then that effectively there is no limit, which is, which is actually, maybe the answer is that-
There is no dwelling unit performance standard, instead it will be controlled by things like height and dimensional setbacks.
Right, and building code, parking, building code, those sorts of things. I mean, I think it's pretty clear from elsewhere, like from right off at the beginning, the whole purpose of, as stated in the purpose, that that is what we're trying to do, but if it is of value to talk specifically about high density, because actually, I'm not sure that we do say that.
No, we haven't, it's not in the purposes.
It's multi-story mixed use.
Multi-story sort of implies it, but what about capturing the dates and say, the footnote to say, no required area for dwelling is provided, dwelling units will be limited by height and other bulk requirements, something like that. So that you know that that's not one of, so that the guy doing the application, coming in with the proposal, knows that there's, there's not going to be a number thrown at him at some point that he didn't know about.
I, I would say that is a decent way to put it. I would, I also like the idea of actually saying that the goal of the multi-story buildings is to, as you put it, capture higher-density development.
To encourage.
Or to encourage higher-density development.
You know, we probably have the greatest demand for single occupant apartments, and we don't award that in our zoning. We call a unit a unit by three bedrooms or a studio.
Right.
And this, the way this is worded here, it's rewarding the single occupant apartment.
Right, studios and single bedroom.
And that's where our greatest demand is, the single profession who doesn't want to rent a room, but can't afford to rent a three-bedroom apartment.
Yep.
And, you know, as this economically, we force builders into three-bedroom apartments or two-bedroom apartments, because a unit is a unit, why not build two bedrooms?
Right.
And this district, we're now going to say, hey, give us your studios, where we're going.
It also allows flexibility to the developer.
Yeah.
So you could get some families that have a couple bedrooms, too.
Sure.
Don't go.
So, any specific comments from you about this?
Where do we stand now? Are we going to try to approve this, or would it be a change we're making here?
I think most of the changes, I mean, at the end of the discussion, we'll have to make that determination, so, but I think for the most part, at least so far from what I've heard, the changes are limited to this Schedule B that George put together.
Yeah, you hadn't seen this before.
No, which the committee hadn't seen until, has not seen, so.
So how about this for a footnote on this, all other residential, area for dwelling square feet, and then have a footnote, one goal of NBR district is, NBR, NBR district is to encourage high-density development, period. Appropriate density will be determined by the planning board.
Yeah, Tom?
I agree that we have assumed from the beginning that higher density is one of the objectives, that is one of the principal objectives. I, myself, I'm even proud to say, something like higher density than in other residential districts in the village.
Okay.
Something like that, that is more specific.
Okay.
And just high, you know, what does that mean, high? But it's higher than we see in other districts in the village, is what we're looking for. And if we have more studio apartments, and more bedroom apartments, in a facility that 10,000 square feet or 50,000, the life is cheaper.
What, R3 is, how many per acre?
12.
12, okay. So, yes, it would be higher than that.
And that's what I was thinking, you could almost present a goal in the form of a range of dwelling units per acre, but I just, I didn't come prepared with the meaning to talk about that. I had highlighted that for discussion, but I just, and so I don't know if you, like, literally put a goal between 18 and 26 an acre, or something like that, I'd really have to research it a bit more to make a recommendation. And, but there's also the way you're constructing the district in terms of the way the code's been revised, and I would want you to make sure that it fits.
So let me explain to the planning board, or remind you all of why this, how this process has been going and what happened. So we consider, the village board approved a three-month moratorium for this district. And so with everybody's help, especially with Dave's and George's and Maurice's, we really, as a committee, pushed hard, meeting twice a week, in order to try to get this hammered out within a period of time that would give the village board something on the order of six to eight weeks to complete the things that they need to do to consider this for approval. And they're constrained by, they have to send this to Ulster County Planning Board, and that, they're given 30 days, they have to do a type-one seeker on this, they have to hold a public hearing, and so my feeling is that if, if this board comes to a gen, an agreement about the, largely on the language that we've put in here, but there is still some question about specific numbers, such as what's in Schedule B, then I would say that that's something that we could consider passing to the village board, and then while Dave's doing his research, they can get started, and those numbers can get inserted before the public hearing, giving you all, you know, not delaying you any further. But that's just my thought. Any, any concerns about doing it that way? Any, any concerns about doing it that way?
No, I think that, I like that idea.
Okay.
To make sure we get within the time constraint.
Right. So does that seem reasonable?
Could we plug in that one sentence, though?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to keep the space. The goal of the NBR district is to encourage higher density than in other residential districts.
Yes.
Sure.
That is on the residential lines.
Okay.
And then if we get a number, we can plug it in as a goal. And I'll change the eighty percent to eighty-five percent and then that's it for this district's schedule.
Then the eighty and eighty-five percent, just to be clear, the current coverage standard is eighty-five percent. The group didn't change it, it's just a typo in the schedule that George presented today.
So let's just go around and if, Liz, do you have any specific comments about the current version for this NBR district we're proposing?
No, the only thing that struck me is that there's a couple of silly little typos that that's about it.
Okay.
You know, nothing earth-shattering, nothing that would change, that would change the meeting.
Those zoning typos.
No typos that would change the meeting, right.
Okay.
Exactly.
So we can.
Could I have those, so I'll fix this.
Like pedestrian?
It's just things like.
John? Nothing?
Robert?
Okay. So would anybody like to make, so, okay, there is one other important point I'd like to raise. It's not for us, but I do think the planning board should be aware. When this was changed from B3 to North Chestnut Gateway, there wasn't included in that legislation a section that referred to the changes to the zoning map. And it was listed as Schedule A in that document. Nobody, as far as I know, has that been able, including the Department of State, has been able to find that map. So the discussion among the committee members was that that's history and that the village board during its deliberations should make a determination about what they would like this district to include. And clearly, property owners need to be aware of that, that's an important consideration. It's obviously not our decision. And presumably that zoning map would, would that necessarily come to us for discussion?
Yes, and these are your recommendations to the village board.
So we would have a look at that before. But again, in the process, that can happen concurrently with their deliberations about the changes to the code. And mostly what we're talking, we're not talking about cutting anything out of the core. It's more a question of is the district going to be expanded north, south, and perhaps a little east? Any, any, any possible combinations of those things? That's really the question. Will, you know, there are parcels that used to be in B3 that were moved to B1. Would they be appropriate to bring back into B3? To the south, there's some question about to the north and to the east, whether there are parcels that would be better served in this district and whether property owners would be interested in that.
Just to build on that, so it seemed that there were footprints discussed in the level of the community, but it didn't make it into the formal adopted documentation. I would characterize it as a handful of parcels that we're talking about, such as to cover up by BOCs to the edge of the community and then a few parcels, for example, down south, covering down to maybe Broadhead. On the west side of Route 32, down covering the footprint, which would go over Salvation Army. And then, as Michael said, also, there's a few, I think there are small parcels in the southern tier of this footprint or over by the Tanning Salon and that area, I believe. And that's from my knowledge.
Okay, and there might be others. I know some property owners have made some, raised some questions about, you know, opportunities. And so that, but I think that at this point, that's, will go in front of the village board and then that will come back to us for discussion.
And that could be, with the committee keeping going, that can be continuing dialogue by the B3 committee to confirm recommendation for footprints. Do you have processed information that you're receiving, maybe in some of the next planning board meeting?
Yeah, we'll see.
And we can also decide topics, maybe like whether that might even be an architectural diagram or diagrams put into the code or something like that, that'll visually show people what they want.
So, thank you. Okay, so somebody would like to make a motion to recommend to the village board that we, that we submit to the village board the proposed language for the neighborhood business residential mixed-use district, as we've discussed today, with Schedule A and Schedule B attached.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
So what I'll do is I'll make those corrections in here.
Okay.
Any of the typos, and I'll send it back. Should I send it back to you?
Yeah, send it to me and I'll just read it one more time through.
Okay.
Make sure that it's clean and.
I'll just give you an unmarked version, then.
That's fine.
Or, I guess the board, the village board wants a totally marked version now to show all the changes.
What do you and?
Typically, they would like to see that because they want to know what has changed. So that they're not looking at something they know, but they don't know.
Right, so I'll create a clean copy and a totally marked copy.
That would be very, very happy. We got a clean copy that is the proposed, the law, and then the highlighting copy.
Because it's not a local law format.
We got to get it to general code to comply, and they need to be able to get it right.
Well, that's down the road, yeah.
This is not a local law format yet. Village Board, I assume, will do that.
Well, somebody else will take care of the format.
Yeah, when they.
But they're tasked.
So, so we'll provide you.
And we don't have any provision about the plan, about the map?
No.
So they'll have to add that, too.
So, so we'll provide you a clean copy with Schedule A and B. And then based off of the North Chestnut Gateway version, you can have a redlined copy as well. And good luck with that.
So I'll get that to you today for every speaking.
It'll be a hard one to read. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for that. So you, so, George, if you send me a copy, I'll confirm that it's ready and let you know. And then you can send it to all the, or.
Well, I'll send it to Dave and you and then let me know and if it's good, I'll forward it.
I'll defer to you because I'm leaving town, I'm pre-scheduled business today.
Okay. That's fine, either I'll forward it or I'll, if you send me the redline version as well, I can just forward it.
I'll send both of you some of my good work.
Then I'll forward it along. And I will send those final copies to all planning board members, to you, Ryan, Dave, to village board members and the village clerk. If I left anybody out, let them know. Okay. So we have two other items that were presented to us by George. One is the recreation fees policy. I'm not sure where, is that something that we just received today?
So do you want me to introduce that topic?
Yeah, one second, because I'm not even sure what I'm supposed to be looking at. I apologize, but.
There was a, just a document circulated sometime ago by Attorney General House that essentially provided some updates to the recreation fee schedule standing.
Okay. Some time ago?
Another way to go.
How can we begin to?
Apologize, I'm not sure.
Hey, we get copies.
Anybody?
I have it here, huh? So I'll run downstairs and make some copies? I wonder, I hope my versions aren't just, they run in the packages?
No.
What's your local laws of?
I have the chain stores and then I have.
I have the escrow.
The same thing.
Same, escrow deposits.
What's to the escrow?
Okay. So while we're waiting, why don't we work on the escrow schedule?
Oh, yeah, this was the other document that, this may be a local law.
Is there a chance that you don't have a physical power to rank?
I thought it was this one.
That is the local law is the topic. I have it.
This one?
So we have a local law.
We got a local law, we don't have the schedule.
We don't have the schedule.
Ah, okay.
So that's the problem, we don't know what we're talking about here.
Well, maybe I can borrow this just a second.
Sure.
Direct fees. The direct fee code, the way it's written, and it's not a schedule issue so much, it's the way it's written. It requires, in subdivision, requires a recreation fee, which is $7,500 per lot now. Requires a recreation fee for each lot in a subdivision, is the way it's phrased, each lot. Which could be read to mean that when you take one lot and split it into two, you have to pay two fees. But the purpose of the recreation fee provision, as it was authorized by the New York State Legislature, was to let municipalities charge for a rec fee when there's a new lot added. In other words, a new family can come to town, and so you're going to have new burdens in the recreation system. And so for each, what really is intended was for each new lot or each additional lot, there would be a recreation fee. So if you have a one lot split into two, you would pay one fee. Or one lot split into three, you would pay two fees. The way our code is written, it's not clear. And so what this is, first of all, trying to do is clarify that by changing that language regarding each lot to say each additional lot, first of all. And by the way, a lot of this comes from Maurice. He asked for this and he went back and forth with me to get some of his concepts clear. So the first thing is to say each additional lot in a subdivision. Secondly, to say each additional undeveloped lot with the thought that if there's already a house on it, let's say you had two houses on the lot, which is unusual, but you did and divided it to, you haven't created any new recreation burden.
Right.
So if it's already developed, we wouldn't consider that to be a lot that gets recreation fee. And the third is a zoning district permitting residential development, which is only there to say that the concept is if you have a new lot and you could put a house on it, but residential is a lot, then you would pay that, that fee, the subdivision. What that leaves out is non-residential development. If you create a new lot in a commercial district and you can't have a residence, you wouldn't pay the fee at that time. Because when you come back to site plan, you do pay a fee for site plan. So if somebody bought one of those raw lots that was in a non-residential zone and came in to build on it, they would pay a fee at that point. Because they pay the rec fee for new site plan approval. So that's why that sort of change in the code is there, to clarify that in subdivisions, there's only new additional lots that are in a residential zone that get charged rec fee of $7,500. The other part of this is with respect to the site plan provision, the recreation fee and reservation of land requirement is for site plan approvals. But what we wanted it to limit to, or it should have been limited to, is site plan approvals of residential development. So if you have a condominium development, or you have a townhouse development, or you have an apartment-house development, you should be paying the rec fee for each new residential apartment or new dwelling unit. And there, this is the first change, I put that in using the current language of the code, which is residential apartment, that's a term in our code already, or new dwelling unit. And then the rest of it's unchanged. And then we provided an exemption going back to January 1. In other words.
So are we gonna, are you gonna provide an overview of the law and then we'll talk about it?
Yeah, definitely. I'm just summarizing what's in here for everyone's sake.
Okay.
What the exemption says is effective January 1 of this year. And that date is somewhat arbitrary, but it was intended to go back before the change that's all of a sudden made everybody's house and, you know, deck subject to site plan approval, which would mean they'd all pay $7,500 for approval of a deck that costs $2,000. So, so the exemption goes back to January 1. It says, "The provisions of this subsection J shall not apply to site plan approval for the first new residential apartment or dwelling unit on a lot, which is a rec, for which a recreation fee has been paid pursuant to 178 of the village code." So in other words, if the lot was created and a rec fee was paid for that lot, then when you build your house, you wouldn't have to also pay for the house.
Right.
If no, if the lot never paid a rec fee, then when you build the house, you would have to pay the rec fee now. This, by the way, this is, I believe, this is exactly what Maurice was asking for. You can imagine there were a bunch of conversations trying to get this straight. But his goal, and I'm not going to go back to Maurice too much, but the goal was to have the fee, which is substantial in the village, apply only where new residential lots or new residential units, which have not previously paid, are created. And that, that's the sole purpose of all these changes. So just to take an example, Rich, if he was to pay fees, would pay three instead of one. You're, really the intention of it was to pay one fee.
For one new house.
For one new house. Or for one lot.
That's about what we do.
But to create one lot, one new lot, you pay a fee, and then you don't pay a fee and build a house.
So this is, so Rich raised a good point.
My feeling is that lots don't need recreation units, houses do. The lot doesn't need recreation. I could subdivide a piece of property and that lot could be good to a two-family house. So do, when I do the subdivision, do I pay for two lots? Or do I pay for one and then later I'm going to go to two-family house, pay for the second unit? I think it's much clearer, much cleaner, that every time somebody comes in for a building improvement for a unit, I don't care if it's apartment, townhouse, house, a unit is $7,500.
To build a dwelling unit.
That's what it is. You know, you, you want to build a unit on the property, it's $7,500 per unit. This way, we don't have someone coming in saying, well, I have a two-family lot. I'll build one unit now and I'll be exempt because once I've already paid a recreation fee, I can get a building permit. I think it gets very muddled and confusing when you have people free bag. I think we have a problem with people in town who have purchased lots thinking their recreation fee may have been paid. I had a subdivision on the north side of those called Green Acres. And when I did that subdivision, every time I built a house, I had to pay the recreation fee. It was nothing like $7,500 back then. But every time I built a house, I had to pay a recreation fee. I didn't pay on my lots because they weren't recreating. But every time, I couldn't get the CO without paying the recreation fee and all fees associated with the development of that lot. Now, some of those lots, I put accessory apartments on. And the village board took the above position that accessory apartments were really single-family houses. And only charged me one fee. But if I put two-family houses on that lot, I would have had to pay two fees. So I really think the recreation fee shouldn't be tied to the unit. That before you can get a C of O or on the issuance of a building permit, take the pick, that's when the recreation fee should be paid. Though I think $7,500 is a lot of money. That's a personal thing that I probably might not be able to have gone. I think that's already set by the village board.
Well, I think it seems like it was implied also in my dialogue with Chairman Whitman, that he was also wanting to make sure that the fee was fair and reasonable and justified and rational as it's established. So I think it was also part of his advocacy to make sure that we know the basis for the fee. And there was an example of a fee schedule analysis by a planner circulated around as well. So that could be something that your planner or others can support as you actually look at the build-out potential or the population growth in the community as well as the recreation supply and some of the future demand and future plan for recreation facilities and make sure that there is a rational basis for your fee. and make sure that there is a rational basis for your fee. I think you'll find in legislative research, where the fee is established, there was a rational fee basis. However, we could confirm that again, if it's the desire of the planning board.
I think if anyone wants to support recreation, and to have it be based on these fees is perfectly good. And $7,500 is probably a reasonable fee. I don't think, being a conservative, I don't like any fees. That matter, not in that it's not a fair one. But I do think the idea of the fee in terms of being confusion, of limiting confusion is, it shouldn't come in when the recreational use comes in. And the recreational use doesn't come in until there's a residential unit on that lot.
That's a reasonable consideration. I would add that for subdivisions, and I'm talking about substantial subdivisions that involve a whole neighborhood, not, not a small one. The way the code is set up, if I remember, is that the applicant first with the planning board makes a determination whether they can provide recreational amenities sufficient to provide for that. And that's a subjective sort of conversation you have to have. And in lieu of that, then it seems like it would be fair to say, if you were going to go what you're suggesting, that, that proper notes be attached to the subdivision approval so that the building department knows that fees of a certain amount are required for the lots in that subdivision.
If a developer wants to negotiate land for fees, we can certainly do that. But I think that that's also been abused, and I think you've had personal experience with that.
It has been abused.
It's been abused.
Right, and...
Whereas here's the fee, it's hard to abuse.
Right, but the way, but the way the code is currently written, it actually is a sequential thing. It's, it's, can you provide the recreation fee for your new subdivision? If you can't, then, then in lieu of that, there's a fee. So, Tom.
Can I make?
Kip.
What the fee is, is a matter of the builder's budget. And that's not the role of the planning board.
No.
How the application of the fee affects the activities of the planning board, that's, you know, that's, that's helpful. If the, if the law needs to be changed in order to facilitate your taking care of the business of the planning board, then I would like to know that, and I would support that, back to the Village Board.
Okay. Kip, you got a comment?
I'm just trying to get a little clarity on it. I'm trying to do the corridors of I guess, for example, if somebody was building thirty studio apartments.
Right.
The recreation fee would be $200,000, is that correct?
At the current.
Approximately.
Yeah, the current number. Yep.
You know, you made a good point, Michael, that the...
But that's current law.
Yeah.
The way the rec fee was authorized by state statute was a two-step process. You first have to determine whether the subdivision allows enough space for recreational land and facilities, and if it doesn't, then you pay the fee. So if you wait until the house is being built on a lot, you're never going to have enough, probably never going to have enough space dedicated to recreational use. So you're sort of locked, and you're always having to pay the fee. So the concept was that when you design, the concept always was for large developments, that when you designed it, you would design park public space to be available. But if you wait until it's all accomplished, and then you, and there wasn't a space built, I don't know how you would, how we'd give people that out, that they could provide recreational space. And I don't know if it's actually authorized to do that, to just wait until a residence is built. Subdivision, I'm sorry, subdivision and site plan are different. Site plan is charged when you build.
Right.
And that's authorized by state law.
Well, so I, so, so for purposes of today, you are at, or is the Village Board asking? This, this originated with...
That came from Maurice.
From Maurice, so... I guess then...
But there it says, we have Rich's on the table, we have, the subdivision was Lester School.
Yeah.
Which, again, is another interesting thing, is dividing one lot into a lot line adjustment that actually eliminates a lot, as I recall.
We're not going to do that.
So, yeah, we're going to do the $7,500 back.
There are two lots in the subdivision, so according to the way, if you read that strictly, it says each lot should be charged $7,500. Which is the other reason we're going back and retract it, to make this clear that that wasn't what was intended.
So, my recommendation would be, or my suggestion, I would say, would be for the planning board to take some time and look at these proposed changes. Consider what Rich has suggested, and at the next Village Board meeting, or the one after that, depending on what you all want to do, we could consider a discussion about this, and then perhaps recommendations to the Village Board.
One question, though. George, you did say that if you don't know whether it's allowed by law...
Yeah, I'll check that.
Yeah, I think once we find out, pretty much.
I'll check that for the next meeting.
Answers the question. But I think still, nonetheless, the proposed language change will go relevant.
The developer's status aside, for example, I could, if I was going to do a large lot subdivision and had $215,000 waiting for use, couldn't that be noted around the subdivision map that there was no recreation fee, therefore if you come in for building permit, it would show it's already paid?
Well, if at the time of the subdivision, you provided recreational space, there would be no fee.
It would, and it would be on the subdivision. It would identify where and what the recreational provisions were going to be. So we've set aside five acres of land for parkland with trails and so forth, that would be on there. So that would be...
But we both know there's been abuses in the past, we don't even need names, so.
What we're dealing with, though, usually is something like a four-lot subdivision, like on Mulberry, is it Mulberry Street, or, I forget the name of the street.
Yeah.
But, so, there's no place for recreational space.
Right.
And it's connected to a project to build homes. You would definitely charge the fee at that point, the subdivision. But what you said is also interesting in that recreation fee could charge over, change over time. In fact, it should, if it's being done properly, and you'd do an annual or bi-annual review of the basis for the fee. And if it's going to go up, it should be charged more close to the time when the house is built, so that you're reflecting today's cost rather than 20 years ago.
If I had paid on all my lots 20 years ago, a girl building today would begin to bargain.
Right.
But 20 years ago, when I did those lots, I think, I think it was $1,200, a lot.
Right.
But today it's $7,500.
Hey, there's some towns that's $500 today.
It's what?
I've been in towns where it's $500.
Oh, yeah.
Today.
But, I mean, you can see that if I had paid on all of those lots, then today, those, those outages would have had a bargain.
Right.
Because of the recreation. And who would have lost out is the town, because that wouldn't compensate for the recreation costs of today. Today, the recreation cost is $7,500, not the $1,200.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, without belaboring this discussion, you could say if the town had gotten all of that money at the time and used it to purchase land in the vicinity, they would have had the land, and they'd still have it, so. Let's, anyway, so...
Can I make just a couple of points to you? What I'd agree to say is for the group to reflect on the discussion today and consider this two-page proposed local law drafted by Attorney Rogers, correct? Can I make some very quick points?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, the point was made about accessory dwelling units as opposed to other dwelling unit types. I mean, the terminology that's evolved as the zoning project has progressed, as we got it from this White, it's called a rent, there's also a term rental dwell, rental, rental dwelling. So, but I think there was, in a sense, a distinction between dwelling units, but also this accessory dwelling unit, which was a unique type. The standard you currently have is two acres. In your existing subdivision, let's say, I guess it's in your site plan law, I might submit, and this, this is tricky. I, you know, there may have been a rationale for using two acres, but I don't think you have a lot of raw developable land in the village as it exists now. Of course, the village boundaries could change. But there might be cases where a quality acre, a quality developable acre could be a pretty good neighborhood playground. And I think there was an allegation of abuse in the past, and that's probably because you don't want wetland as your place where they're proposing for recreation. You want land, maybe it might have a water feature, but you want developable land where maybe there can be trails or park facilities and things like that. I might submit that an acre might be an example of a consideration. And then there's a couple of administrative things that this law proposed change in site plan standard and subdivision standard. But it was, the standard was payment made prior to formal approval of the subdivision plat. And I just wondered if it was prior, I think you've had more discussion about when the fee might be assessed, and it really is much different. I would also support that if there's a rational legal basis to use, for example, a certificate of occupancy. But I just thought that a payment should be before endorsement of the plat, because you get approval, and it's hard for us to be collecting fees right before approval, okay? And then, I guess that was it.
Okay, thank you. Those are good points. So then we'll postpone this conversation until another meeting?
Okay. I think just, I guess I'll reinforce what George said. In some ways, I think I've promoted to this group, thinking about like lot line adjustments, developing standards within your subdivision code, and, and, for, for things like lot line adjustments are... I think that intent was for lot line adjustments still to be subdivision, but they are a more minor type. So it does seem like things like lot line adjustments, you want to be very clear about how you want recreation fees applied in situations like that.
Okay. Let's move on to the last item of consideration about escrow policy.
So I, I meant this, I didn't mean to say scheduling the impact fee discussion. If it's the local law, your schedule for impact fee, for escrows was what George said. So do you have the schedule of escrow deposits documented? Do you have a copy of that?
I don't.
Yes, we do.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I didn't get it.
Here.
This, this was not requested by, but prompted by David and Brian Arms, who were saying that, or both were saying independently, that it would help expedite the application process if we had a schedule of escrow fees, so they didn't have to be set each time. And we've done this before. I don't know if they were set or not, I know that I've been involved in providing proposed schedules in 2011 and 2013, just looking back at my records. And so it's 2015, so it's time to do another new schedule. They haven't gone up, they've gone down in what I was thinking of proposing. But this, this schedule is simply based on what my experience is so far in terms of what these things take in terms of time. And also, now that we have site plan required for one or two family dwellings and alterations, that was not in the schedule before.
Okay.
But just first of all, looking at the schedule, applications for site plan, special primary for one or two family dwellings, that I think can be $500 on a regular basis. Alteration of one or two family dwellings is what, $500? And I should say, too, this is the initial deposit, which is returned to the extent it's not used. And I don't think I've used $500 on any one, but you never know, it's between $200 and $400 probably. Commercial, no exterior construction, and that's where we have basically a change of use internally. It usually ends up being parking issues and so on, so I've kept that commercial at $1,000. And then commercial with exterior construction, I would increase to $1,500, just based on experience, the way it's gone in the past. Subdivision's creating two or more lots, a real subdivision is $1,000. Creating one new lot that is taking one lot and is splitting it in half would be $750. And a lot line alteration, I can make $500. If it's a secret type-one action, I would just add $500. In that type-one actions usually end up being more complicated, taking more time. And if that's known up front, that would be easy to, to apply, but it may not be known up front, and in that case, we can't really apply. So that would be the schedule, and I, I did add to the schedule some language which is directly out of Section 21266. Pretty much directly out of it, summarized a little bit, to make it clear to everyone, and particularly to the applicant, that this is the schedule. The schedule will be kept on file in the building department, in the village clerk, and the secretary to the planning board. That if the escrow deposit is deemed inadequate by the consulting professional for a particular application, like if we know that something really big is coming in, and it's just going to take a lot of time, and we know it's going to be two or three times this, that we would consult, I have here with the building inspector and the chair, to determine the appropriate escrow deposit, subject to approval by the planning board, always approval by the planning board. And the escrow deposit shall be collected at the time of the application, and no application will be deemed administratively complete until the deposit has been received. That's very important, that's actually in the statute, in the zoning law. And then at the bottom, if any initial deposit is depleted to less than half the original amount, the applicant shall replenish the escrow amount, the original amount, if the consultant and planning board chair it, if necessary. Now, I didn't think it was necessary to back to the planning board on that, because the, basically, the initial amount was already set. And in such event, the professional review may be suspended until the escrow can is replenished. That's also, I believe, in chapter, in 21266. And finally, at the request of the consultant or the applicant, or the applicant, the planning board may modify the amount of any required initial deposit consistent with the standards in 21266. So, and by the way, those standards are simply that it must be reasonable fee, it must be for necessary work. You determine reasonableness by looking at the fees of attorneys or engineers or whatever. So the standards are there. Now, I gave a resolution also, which, which repeats some of these items about being kept on file. If it's inadequate, then it can be increased with the planning board chair. Now, this should say, "Subject to planning board approval." And then, "Such escrow deposits shall be collected at the time of the application, is filed, no application deemed complete unless paid." So that, these numbers are actually less than the others I found in 2011 and 2013. I don't know if anyone's ever adopted, but it does turn out, talking to David, talking to Bryant, that they don't have one. They don't have a schedule like this available, so.
And in some ways, this is just, we, we use a rule of thumb that's presented here.
Right.
And it's ratified by your board. So like, we've been using a rule of thumb of recommending to applicants, $500 for a minor residential site plan would be your escrow. And we recommend that the MOU be filled out and the check be provided with the application. So in a sense, we're just sort of codifying a policy of the planning board that in effect, staff is already applying, not being administered, but it's with your discretion.
Well, that makes sense. Comments, Luke?
Yep.
It's just that it seemed kind of arbitrary in lieu of many projects that would need any kind of engineering work.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, these look more like legalese without engineering.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
And you could put an engineering next to that, but I don't know what the fees would be.
I know, but maybe we should, you know, I'm...
Yeah, I'm thinking...
Not necessarily a single-family house, I don't think we're going to get...
No, but commercial with exterior construction and subdivisions of two or more lots, I would say in those two cases, we would like to have engineering.
So what I would do is put legal at the top of this, and then put engineering beside it.
Or even an engineering and other, or something like that, in case you ever wanted a landscape architect or a consultant, or something like that.
Yep.
Engineering slash other. And, well, knowing what Dave has said in the past, if it's a commercial exterior construction, maybe the same number, $1,500.
It's the one that's coming back, but it's not used, Mr. Stone.
Right.
But we did have one applicant a couple of years ago that we could have an escrow on, because major problems.
He did.
But this is, this is for the board, for the...
We want to get the escrows right, right? We want staff to do a great job administering it, we need to know accounting statuses, and I hope that we've been really trying to get on top of that, the building department and planner, and working with the attorney and others to make sure that...
Why don't we, why don't we consult with Dave about those two categories and see what he recommends? And then we can add those numbers in.
It's good. The only trouble is I don't know how Dave or Bryant would know...
I think he needs to consult with David Clowes, and he wrote the planning board.
I realize that.
I'm saying I don't know how Bryant or, like I guess Bryant, when he gets the application, will know whether engineering's going to be required or not. So this is the initial deposit to make.
So here's the thing, you presented it as a deposit. I don't recommend that it be a deposit. What we're doing is we're receiving the administrative filing fee and the recommended escrow and the MOU at the point of submission. But what if we reject an application because it's not complete? Don't deposit the escrow until we're at the planning board and you say, yes, create the escrow as part of the completeness determination. So I would just change the word deposit to until such escrow check has been received, and then we'll go through the formal process always with the planning board, just to ratify these guidelines we provide.
The problem was in the past, and the reason we asked it to be collected at the application, was that I don't know whether it's going to be escrow established until it gets to the planning board, and they're at their first feeding, and I haven't reviewed.
Very good point.
I can't write the mini-memo or anything, because there's been no money charged.
There was, in the recent part line, now it comes from case experience, and we had one case there, it didn't make it to the planning board for completeness, and I asked for the check not to be deposited, but, so maybe I should...
Or be refunded, if not spent, but anyhow, we have tried that in the past.
I don't think it's going to be cut and dry, but I think we can probably cover most situations. So most applications, it would be useful for, to be able to provide the consultants with the ability to, you know, to review whether, and most of the times, it will be just legal. And if it's engineering, at that point, before it comes to the planning board, it should be extremely preliminary, unless we're talking, well, it should be under, I would say, any circumstance, right? But to just have a number there, then I think we could, as a board, discuss that. Without it, I think we're being a little bit arbitrary. I'd like to add, I'd like to suggest one change, based on my, some past experience. I would like, in all cases, for the planning board to vote on any increase to the fee. So if it drops below half, I would like that notification be made, but I would really prefer that the planning board make the decision about what to ask for next, because I'm concerned that there have been some circumstances that I am aware of where personalities have created problems, and then money becomes a very contentious issue, so.
So that's in the second-to-last paragraph, Michael?
Yeah, so...
So I got the word chair.
So it's absolutely the case that once it drops below half, that they should replenish it to the original amount.
If the consultant and planning board deem it necessary.
Right, if the consultant and the planning board deem it necessary, and you might even say the original amount, or if it's simpler, we'll just leave it at that, or an amount, the original amount or an amount to be determined by the consultant and planning board. So that would be my suggestion there. So with that, then...
Do you want to capitalize the secretary of the planning board and also...
Sure.
Chair of the planning board? And do you want, shall consult with chair of the planning board, comma, for planning board, if the planning board assigned E, or you just want to leave that as chair of the planning board?
I would just, I would just leave it as the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, then I would ask if we just tabled this until the next meeting or when we get the numbers that we need?
Yeah.
And have a fresh copy drawn up.
George, are you checking with David Clowes or not?
No, I wasn't.
I'll check with him.
Would you mind?
No.
Thank you. I just want to do a quorum check for the eighteenth. I am, well, first off, I'm here just because of the, Rich had to recuse himself, but Rich is the acting planning board chair.
Which is a problem, by the way, we haven't discussed...
Which, okay.
I mean, my agreement with Maurice would be acting chair. Most of us, Maurice was never going to be absent.
Okay.
And I only had to be chair twice.
You were awesome.
There's a sense of impropriety in the fact that a retired real estate broker and somewhat still active investor would be chair of the planning board. I believe I'm an absolute asset to the planning board, I believe my background's an asset to the planning board. I believe I have the right and should sit here. But I think when I act as chair, some people's nose gets fed out of shape, and we just don't need that.
Okay.
So, you know, as much as I was lovely, honored, as much as I, you know, my agreement with Maurice was, if you get in trouble, I'll cover you. And that's, wasn't meant for me to step into his place on an affirmative basis. And a good example again was today, here, the first issue on our agenda, there was a dual property, which one of my assets represents a state. Obviously, there's a sense of, you know, a problem in that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So I would hope that the village board moves quickly on getting us a chairman, and I think we all know who it's going to be.
This...
Unless anybody else raises their hand really quickly.
This excellent, we have...
That's her to collect it.
No.
The other thing that we could really use a bit in action.
Yes. Tom, and then...
I just need to prove that presence here. Rich already conveyed to me that he would not want to be the chair.
Okay.
I've already conveyed that to the mayor, which is here, who knows all of this, and I've already also consulted with the mayor about the appropriateness of your stepping in as chair.
Okay.
Which I concur with.
Thank you.
And of course, urge that we have on the, if not the very next village board agenda, the next one after that, the replacement of a person to put another person on this.
Okay, thanks. I am, I'm not commenting on that, I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, I just want everybody to know that...
I'm not unaware of it, and I've started looking for people. I encourage planning board members, if you know somebody you think would be appropriate to fill our vacancy.
I was thinking the point of that, is it possible that we can be in on the interview process of who's going to work with us?
Consult with the chairman of the committee that will appoint, and that's the village board. But it's not, it's an appointment, right?
I mean, we are professional enough to work with anybody.
By the village board.
We're professional enough to work with anybody.
Right.
But it would be kind of nice to be in on the selection process of who we're going to work with.
So let me...
And building a team, I think that's a great idea.
So...
If we get a good candidate, we should have you guys section as well.
So, two things. I refer to you as the acting planning board chair with no presumption that you were going to do this for an extended period, but I'm gone the next planning board meeting.
Okay, I can still...
And I wanted to make sure that we had a quorum for the next meeting, because we won't have an appointment by then, most likely, and if you're available, are, will both of you be here on the eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have a quorum. There is a possibility that I'm, no, that's the last meeting in August, so that's fine. I will certainly be back for September. And I agree with you, actually, until mid-two thousands, the process was always, the planning board would actually receive the applications for interested applicants, interview all of those people, and then make a recommendation to the village board, who would then interview that person. It changed, and I'll take some responsibility for that, because the process had long been that the village board didn't even interview candidates, they just took the recommendations. And for reappointments, and what was happening was people were going onto important boards, like planning and zoning boards, and a new village board would come along, and they didn't even know anything about those people who were sitting there, so. And the process has now evolved where the initial, where much of the responsibility's completely been taken away from the boards, and so I'd love to, I'd love for us to have a chance to evolve it a little bit.
Well, I feel very fortunate that the three of you were appointed, even though I didn't get a chance to interview.
Yeah, no, I think it's really worth it. I totally concur, but I think this is a very solid board. I really enjoy working with everybody, but it would be good. So with that...
We'll have a quorum for the eighteenth.
A motion to...
And I think a motion be adjoint.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for this.
So you brought your little dog. Next time, I get you bring my Great Dane.
And I'll bring my Newfoundland.
There you go.
They're going to have a great time.
I bring my Chihuahua, but I can be embarrassed.
Go large, or don't go at all, baby.
Can your Great Dane fit in?